I asked to provide some documents.
We also have letters pertaining to previous requests. One, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Amadoulaye, we also have with you. To speed up, we also have the cash books surrendered from the dump site revenue collection by both African positions like, for example, you have here the clerk to council. Procurement and also yes, procurement, these are examples of correspondences we made to the We also have, I've also submitted an analysis of the abattoir at the market and also this subsequent fencing of the, of the dump site. These were two separate components of the, of the contract. Now we also have the totals for the, for the, for the two totals and also the contract value. So after having deducted the totals from the respective contract values, we also, like for my records, like I said previously before, I did not detect a overpayment, but instead we supposed to pay an amount of three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. So those analyses are here. And we also were to produce the memo that made the mayor advise us to sit in all the councils. So upon, upon investigations, I was made to believe that the inclusion took place in twenty twenty three, thirtieth August, and this is the memo. Yes, ma'am. So these are the, these are the documents that I have brought forward and those that are still pending are in the, in the letter that was written to myself and copied to you by the present chief executive officer.
Um, thank you, Mr. Batschili. We're in copy of this letter that you just submitted. You can have your copy of the letter back.
Thank you.
Um, I will tender these documents then. There is a contrast between what is submitted as per the letter and what's still outstanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I want to, I want, I want to let the commission know that I'm also directly involved in making sure that the additional documentation that are supposed to be provided are also be part of the process of the of recovering those documents because I think some of them very, very, very important for our, for the council's documentation.
Okay, we understand. Um, Madam Chair, we apply to tender the following documents from Mr. Batschili. The Bange City Link Austin project. Receipt of payment from Ecobank for the sum of twenty three thousand dated the tenth of October twenty twenty four. Also receipt of payment of Hadidatujamba, a trade license collector for the sum of forty one thousand that was repaid by Mr. Kamara. Renewals of contract files of the contracts, contractors of Bange City Council. Correspondence of advertisements of post of Bange City Council on a letter different dates of seventeenth of August twenty twenty three. Different vacancy positions that were advertised by BCC.
So, uh, council, can I just help you with the clarity? Uh, it's, it's, you know, you, uh, the council cannot directly apply, advertise the vacant positions.
We understand.
Okay, I just wanted to.
We ask you to provide the document. So I, I understand it's for different vacancies. It's different, different vacancies. It's correspondence. That's what I say. Thank you. BCC list of recipients of telephones and laptops for the Bangles. Um, for the EU project staff. Cash books of Ba Kausukani. Seven cash books. Uh, Mr. Mr. Batschili.
Yes, council.
This is a pile of documents with different details.
Yes.
Am I right?
Yeah, can I, can I, can I sub into you, you know, with all the three companies that were mentioned
Hmm.
at the project.
Yes.
Yes. So we have a breakdown of all that was submitted for the
It comes along with the letterhead.
Yes.
Or
Well, it is, it's something that was prepared here.
Okay, list of submissions.
Yeah, we have JaloCo, the, the documents that were submitted.
Okay.
Uh, Eco Farm and also Fat Masali.
So that's the cover note for this pile.
Yes, so
May we please have it?
And then add it over to you.
May we please have the cover note for this bunch? Then it will be easier for me to tender it. Ban Chair, we also tender a bundle of forty two documents from Patimasabali Trading EU Project and Jalokolong. Eco Farm Enterprise. Alongside with the cover, cover note of all the documents compiled in this bunch. We tender all documents into evidence as an exhibit. Mr. Batschili.
Yes, ma'am.
The contract file that you have submitted.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, I have just perused it. It indicated contracts um that were granted.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't seen twenty, twenty eighteen. Is it the, the, the award of contracts that in twenty nineteen?
Sorry, I didn't get
I said, I said the contract file that you have submitted.
Yeah.
I've looked into the contract file.
Yeah.
Uh, I haven't seen because what we ask you to produce is from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Yes. So for this file, there is no twenty eighteen contracts. So I just wanted to confirm from you.
Do you mean specifically to the project or overall?
Overall.
Overall.
Yes. Because what, what is contained in this file is I can only see twenty nineteen, but there is no twenty eighteen.
Okay, maybe I'll have to make a reconciliation on, on, on the comeback.
Mr., Mr. Batschili, you have been given so much time to make this reconciliation. You were asked specifically to provide the contracts that BCC have given
Yeah.
to employees.
Yes.
That did not pass through um the service commission.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That was what you were asked to do.
Now I understand.
And this is the contract file for that. Is that, is that not the case?
Those that were given contract.
Yes.
Yes.
So in twenty eighteen, you did not, uh, issue any contract to any personnel? You did not employ anybody on contractual terms?
Twenty eighteen. I'll have to find out, ma'am, sorry.
All right. The contract file containing, um, contracts uh, for employees from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three. A Bange City Council receipt dated the eighth of February twenty twenty two. The, the receipt, the receipt is in the name of, um, Hadjatujabang for the sum of forty one thousand. An Ecobank receipt dated can't check, let me see this date. The receipt is dated eighth of October twenty twenty four. It's a transaction for the sum of ten thousand dollars being cash deposited by Makumbasane. Another receipt dated the, the twenty third of October twenty twenty four. Uh, credited to the, uh, City Link Bange Ustent EU Project for the sum of twenty three thousand. The cash was deposited by Makumasane. And these are Ecobank receipts. These two are Ecobank receipts. The third one is a trust bank receipt dated the twenty eighth of February twenty twenty five. Um. The account that was credited was the Bange City Council Austin, uh, project. The cash deposit was made by Dauda Jones. And the last receipt is dated the twenty first of July twenty twenty five. And, uh, the cash deposit was done by Modulamin Beba. And this is for the sum of thirty thousand dollars. A document that contains the loan repayment for the employees that took loan from Bange City Council. A list of recipients of telephones and laptops by the EU project staff. A letter dated the seventeenth of August twenty twenty three. Um, it is from the Bange City Council. It is addressed to the Chairman Local Government Service Commission. It has reference ninety five stroke BCC stroke one or two in brackets, one stroke volume one. True to the Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Land, Regional Government and Religious Affairs. It has a subject advertising the post of clerk of council and the public relation officer. The letter is signed for by, signed for the chief executive officer. It is copied to the Lord Mayor, Acting Director of Admin, Director of Finance, Director of Audit, Chairman Establishment Committee and a file copy is maintained. Attached to this letter is also a letter dated the twenty eighth of July twenty twenty. It is addressed to the Chairman Local Government Service Commission. And it has the caption vacancy and advertisement of postings, position, sorry, at the procurement unit Bange City Council. It is also signed by the chief executive officer. It is copied to the Lord Mayor and the director general of GPPA and a file copy is maintained. The third letter is dated the thirtieth of April twenty nineteen. It has reference ten stroke BCC stroke one or two stroke G stroke volume one. It is addressed to the Chairman Local Government Service Commission. It is from Bange City Council. It has the subject contract for the clerk to cancel. It is signed by the CEO, copied to the Lord Mayo, PS Ministry of Local Government and Lands, Acting Director of Admin, Chairman Establishment Committee and a file copy is maintained. And the last letter is dated the twenty third of April twenty nineteen. It has reference five stroke BCC stroke two in brackets, one stroke volume two. It is addressed to the Chairman Local Government Service Commission. And it has the subject submission of additional application for the vacant position of senior procurement officer. It is signed by the chief executive officer and it is copied to the Lord Mayo BCC Chairman Establishment Committee and a file copy is maintained. Three cash books maintained by Ibrahim Abah. Uh. Um. For the dump site in Banjo. The three cash books are for the year twenty twenty three. The first cash book is for the year twenty twenty three for Ibrahim Abah. The second, uh, cash book is for the year twenty twenty two, uh, for Ibrahim Abah. And the third cash book, um, is for the year twenty twenty three, uh, by, maintained by Ba Kausukani. The fourth cash book for the year twenty twenty five is maintained by Ba Kausukani for the dump site. The fifth cash book uh, for the year twenty twenty four maintained by Ba Kausukani. The sixth cash book for the year twenty twenty four maintained by Ba Kausukani for the dump site in Banjo. The seventh cash book for the year twenty twenty four maintained by Ba Kausukani. A bundle of thirty five documents with regards to the Jalongkolong, Jalongkolong construction project. A bundle of twenty nine documents. Um, this is in regards to the Fatima trading contract. And the last bundle of documents contains twenty four documents with regards to the Eco Farm, uh, project. These documents are admitted in evidence as exhibit and they are marked as LGC slash BCC slash MB slash zero one eight. As the commission pleases.
Uh, council, so can I, can I ask a question?
Please go on.
Yeah, because I've not heard the chapperson talking about the one that has submitted, uh, for the abattoir.
What?
Abattoir.
Is it in the bunch of forty five documents or is it the first bunch that I
It's not, it's not among the It's not, it's not among the, submitted separately.
Separately, it's probably in one of the parts. Um, the, sorry, the registrar will give it to you. You can separate it and then you can give it to us. Sorry, ma'am chair, you can go on.
Yes, I was just saying that we are admitting the ones that you have given us right now.
I al- I also submitted it.
Yes, okay, we'll give you, we'll give it to you. What about this document, Mister Bachili?
The one I'm referring to is the uh Abathwa.
The fencing of the Abathwa?
Yeah, the fencing.
The project for the Abathwa?
Yes.
But is this what you were required to produce to the Commission?
No, you know, I was asked by the lead council.
Yes.
What led to the overpayment?
Yes.
Of one hundred and twenty one thousand dollars.
Yes.
So I said, okay, for me, as far as I'm concerned, the P V's that I sign.
Yes.
Is what they total to.
So.
So it's like.
This is, this is your evidence.
Yes, that's the evidence.
But where are the, where, where, where is the accompanying documents to show us that this calculation you have done on this paper? Is, what is evidencing what you are saying?
Yeah, you know, I'm trying to, because the thing is, I did not have time to, yes, I found this.
But how, well, in any case, let me just admit this first.
Okay, yes, and subsequently.
A handwritten, um. A handwritten document by the witness, Mister Mustafa Bachili. Uh. Which is titled with no date and no signature. Uh fencing of dump site. Is hereby admitted in evidence as an exhibit and it is marked as. L G C slash B C C slash M B slash zero one nine.
As the Commission pleases.
Now, Mister Bachili.
Yes, ma.
Uh. For us to be.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Is, is it possible maybe if I could go and get it done again and, and, and bring it back again?
No, this has already been admitted in evidence, Abach.
Okay.
Yes, whatever additional information you can give.
Okay.
Because this document, as we speak.
Okay.
We, it is, it cannot tell me anything.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. Is that all what you have for us today?
Yes.
Alright. Uh you said you, there was a document, there is a letter.
Yes.
And there are some additional documents that you have written to the current C E O.
Yes.
To help you. Get from B C C.
Yes.
So uh what is the situation now?
Oh, that's what I was saying earlier on, because uh. God willing.
Are you see pursuing the document?
Yeah, I want to personally make sure that I proceed with him. So that he can drop them as soon as possible.
So Mister Bachili, we will give you. Up to Tuesday.
Yeah.
Latest.
Yeah.
Whatever document you cannot produce to us.
Yeah.
We will, we will um, we will presume that you do not have the documents. Because we have, you've been here for a very, very long time, Mister Bachil. And we have given you all the opportunity and this. Um. We don't have this luxury of time anymore. So it is, it behoves on you to try and do whatever you can to make sure that. For all the documents that we have asked you, you have, for the ones that you are not able to produce, you write to us to say. These are the documents that I cannot produce. I have written to the institution and they could not give me the documents.
Okay.
Alright?
Okay, Ma, can I, can I, can I make a plea?
Yes.
Uh to extend it to Thursday, please?
No, it's only Tuesday I can give. Alright?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that goes to the council.
Alright, um you can, um. Mohammed Cham, who is Mohammed Cham?
He was the finance manager.
Yes, the finance manager is supposed to, to come in today to bring in some further documents. You can wait for him so that.
Okay, alright.
Part of the uh, what is contained in your, that letter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You understand?
You're right.
Can, you can, he can help you something.
He, he is the one who's supposed to provide some of them.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Mister Bachili, you are reminded of few documents that are not on the letter and you are to produce. All payments and allowances in relation to the payment of Makumbasane. Then if the finance manager comes, if it's along the documents, you can do a compilation of all the payments and allowances paid to.
Okay.
Makumbasane. Also, as the list of the documents that were provided or attached. Or mentioned in the letter that you just showed us this morning.
Okay.
The, um, the judgment in relation to the case of the mayoress. You were also asked to provide that by the lead council. That will be all for Mister Bachili for now.
Please call in the next witness. You are discharged, you may go.
Okay, Ma, thank you.
Alright, we hope to receive all your documents by Tuesday. Thank you.
Afternoon, Mister Witness, you may kindly take your seat. So witness, for continuation of your testimony before this commission of inquiry into local government councils and related matters. I remind you that they are still under oath before I hand you over to Madam Chair for us to proceed. Thank you, Madam Chair, over to you.
Good afternoon, Mister Gano. You are welcome back. Yes, Council, you may proceed.
Thank you, um Mister Gano. You were to provide some documents. May we please have the list of the documents that you've provided? Miss, Mister Gano?
Yes, ma.
Have you prepared a cover note for the documents that you had to provide?
Covering note, no, ma.
But you have them in a well arranged manner where we will understand, because I understand you have a bunch as well.
Yes, I was supposed to write a covering note.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I, I didn't know, I'm asking, should I?
No, no, that's fine. If they're well arranged, you can just provide the ones you're having so that we can tender them. Um Mister Gano? Here, please. You have your, do you need time to sort out your documents?
Just take one minute. I'm just looking for one policy which I could not find. It's so rare.
Okay, then you can provide the ones you have whilst we. Tender those, then you can provide the last one that you are looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Or otherwise, we can give you time to sort that out. We can call in another witness before then you can come back. If you need time to sort it out.
I'm fine, ma. I, we can proceed, ma.
Thank you, we can please proceed.
Okay, the ones I have here. Is. Ma asked me to provide my um appointment letter with the Red Cross.
Yes, please.
The. Framework of Agreement. Though it's not the same, but this was the one we were using to work. And this was the midterm when the project was reviewed. It was asked by the lead council to provide. And the, the contact framework of agreement. That is this one here. And the. Con. The technical proposal for the H R pro- policy. That is here. So I'm looking for one more. I'll figure it out very soon and should give that to you.
Okay. Madam Chair, we apply to tender the following documents from the witness Mister Al Fouseh Nigano. An appointment letter dated twenty fourth September. Two thousand and one. Signed by Andrew Jajoo, Acting Secretary General, copied President. Vice President Treasury. Brand Chairman Deputy Finance Department. Attached has a job description or T O R. Another letter annexed to the framework partnership between. The city of Ostend and B C C. Local framework activity metrics. Of City Link Ostend Banjo Project. Contracts agreement for the renovation and rehabilitation of Crab Island Building. Agreement dated the thirty first day of December twenty twenty one. The other document is the Grand Contract External Action of the European Union. The last one we have is the technical proposal of the Banjo B C C. Funded project. Of May two thousand and two. Mister Gano, have you seen the policy or what you were looking for? So you can be added.
Yes, and I couldn't remember. I think it's Lead Council Omar asked me to provide the order K M O U's that I had. So right now, and I have the M O U with the Red Cross, Banjo Red Cross.
Okay.
And this one is uh the Bolo, Bolo. This one is with Wapsa, those were the M O U's. But Council, can I add this?
One minute, please. Sorry. Also, ma'am chair, we have the M O U's of the consultants of the components of the projects. It's the M O U of B C C and Gambia Red Cross Society. Red Cross, uh sorry, another M O U of B C C, between B C C and Bolo Association. The third M O U is between B C C and Wapsa. All tendered. Also, all tendered into evidence as an exhibit.
Um, Mr. Gano, is this all the documents we have asked you to produce for the commission?
Yes.
Ma...
First, ma'am.
Yes, he said for now these are the ones that he sorted, so he wanted to ask if there will be need for another document. So if this one's attended and if there is need, then that can be form part of another exhibit list or we can hear him.
Let me just admit this.
As Madam Chair.
Do you have any further documents with you?
Only two pending, that is the P V you asked me. I still have it here, the 499, that's coming from Mohammed Cham, the finance, he's the one who have it. So I asked him to provide it for me when he come, then I'll tender it. The P V you asked for the last time.
Yes, so is that the only single document that is outstanding on what we have asked you to produce?
Yeah, yes, the ones I... And the loan agreement with the... For this steering committee? I don't have the loan agreement, but I have the correspondence I had with the former director of finance, Mr. Momodu Kamara, where I was requesting for a refund of the money. So the attached letter is there of all the amount that it was owed.
Okay.
So I have that document with me here.
So for whatever document you do not have to present to us, write to us to say you do not have the document, but you have a further document.
Okay.
In reference or in relation to the document that we have asked for.
Let me just give this, then it will be only the P V that is pending, which when Mohammed Cham arrive, I will try to fix that one out.
Let me admit this once.
Okay.
So you still have some pending documents for us, right?
I'm going to tender one.
Yes, that is what I'm saying, you still have some pending documents for us.
Yes, ma'am, I do, yes ma'am.
Alright, thank you. A document titled Annex to the Framework Partnership Agreement between the city of Austin and Banjo City Council for Sustainable Public Procurement Expenditure and Zero Kickback Policy. This is an annex, right?
Yes.
Alright. A Logical Framework and Activity Metrics for the C R I S Intervention. That is the City Link Austin Banjo Partnership for Sustainable City Development. The Contract Agreement for the Renovation and Rehabilitation of Crab Island Buildings through the EU-funded Austin Project City Link Project implemented by the Banjo City Council in the city of Banjo. The agreement is dated the 31st day of December 2021. Between Banjo City Council and Eco Farm Construction. Hearing after call the contract. The Grant Contract, that is the External Actions of the European Union, which is referenced 2019/408969. The Technical Proposal for the Banjo City Council EU-funded Project, which is the City Link Austin Banjo. The title is Consulting Services Development of H R and Training Policy, dated May 2022. A memorandum of understanding between Banjo City Council Austin Banjo EU Project and the Gambia Red Cross Society. A memorandum of understanding on a cooperation framework between Austin City Council, Banjo City Council and Molo Association on the implementation of the EU project, that is the City Link Austin Banjo Partnership for Sustainable City Development. A memorandum of understanding between Banjo City Council and Wapsa Grassroots Organization and Nonprofit Organization, Nonprofit Non-Governmental Organization, N G O. And the final document is a letter addressed to to Dr. Sehut T. Sabali. And the letter is dated 24th of September 2001. And it is, it has the caption "appointment". The letter is addressed actually to Mr. Gano. Mr. Gano, this letter is from the Red Cross, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This is your letter of appointment when you were in serving with the Red Cross?
Yeah, you asked for it the last time.
Alright.
When I was making a statement to this council, you told me to produce it.
Okay.
Next time I come.
Alright. The letter is dated, let me take that again, the letter is dated 24th of September 2001, it is addressed to Al Fosse Nigano. And it has the subject appointment. These documents are admitted together in a bundle as exhibit in evidence and they are marked as L G C slash B C C slash A G slash 004.
As the commission pleases. Now, Mr. Gano, you have more documents to tender?
The one I was seeing, I'm just looking for it, I have found.
You have found it?
Yes.
That's a policy?
One is the, uh... Ma asked me about the steering committee last time, the loan issues.
Yes, please.
Any supporting documents, so there was a correspondence between me and B C C to try to recover the funds. So those correspondence and the breakdown of how much is owed, who and all what not.
Yes, may we please have the document?
And this is, uh... The remaining of the K M O U between B C C and B Cos, which is one of the components. So those were the remaining one, the only one left now is the P V she asked for, which finance is yet to arrive, so I asked him to help me provide.
That's fine, so that will be all for the documents that you have. Okay. Madam Chair, we apply to tender the loan correspondence of the Banjo Austin Project and memorandum of understanding between B C C and B Cos Gambia. Dated the 25th of February 2022. Signed by the CEO Mustafa Bachily and Mr. Gibebba Jo for B Cos. We admit these two documents into evidence as an exhibit.
And a K M O U dated 25th of February 2022 between Banjo City Council and B Cos Gambia. The second document is a memo dated the the 10th of June 2022. It is addressed to the CEO. And the, um... And the attention of the finance director was drawn. The memo is from the project manager. And the subject is recovering of allowances paid to the former steering committee members. And the last document is an email dated the 10th of April 2025. It is from Momodu Kamara to Jonas. And attached to this email is a letter that is addressed to the Honorable Lord Mayo. And, um... It has the caption. The letter is from also, um... The Banjo City Austin Link from Mr. Jonas. The letter doesn't have any, 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 any caption. I... What is this, what is this, Mr. Gano, what is this email about? Because I don't seem to have any idea of what this is about.
It's a wrong email, that's the right email, I just realized when you started reading, because what happened?
Because that is why I'm having a challenge to understand what it is all about.
I realize, the content is like, we have a lot of correspondence.
Is it the right or the wrong email that you have given me? You just said it is the...
This is the right one.
Alright.
This is the right one.
Please give it to Council.
It all came the same day, you know, but this...
Madam Chair, the document earlier mentioned and tendered through, the document dated April 10, 2025, is hearing withdrawn and the right document or email sent on the same day of the 10th of April 2025 is hearing admitted into evidence as an exhibit. Mr. Gano, you will be giving this the wrong letter back.
The email dated the 10th of April 2025. It is captured recovery of funds. The said letter is admitted in evidence together with the earlier two documents that have been mentioned. They are admitted in evidence as exhibit and they are marked as L G C slash B C C slash A G slash 005.
As the commission pleases. Mr. Gano, is that all the documents that you have in your possession today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, before leaving and whilst we know one document is pending, who's with the finance manager, you're also reminded to bring the email correspondence in relation to the hiring of consultants that were sent to Austin. You remember the email that it was requested by the lead council. Also, Madam Chair requests you to provide the name of the volunteer that the 7,500 euros was paid to. There was a payment of 7,805 euros of a volunteer. Madam Chair asks you, then you were to provide details of this volunteer.
Yes, that's the P V I'm saying, it was not a volunteer according to the finance.
Okay.
This figure is supposed to be the E C C's counterpart contribution towards the project. There's the figure. P V 499 is the one I'm...
The one that was supposed to come in, then now you're only... Now you're only required to bring the email correspondence of hiring of consultants that were sent to the Austin project. Madam Chair, in the absence of any other question for Mr. Gano, that will be all for him.
Mr. Gano, we expect to receive your documents.
Sure, thank you.
Yola sa. By, by, by tomorrow.
Yes, that's possible.
Yes, alright.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, when you get these documents, you will come in on Monday so that we can admit the documents. Alright? Yes. Sorry, no, you will have to wait and get Mr. Cham to get you those documents that you wanted him to get you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, I understand fully.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mister Witness. You may kindly, or good afternoon. You may kindly take your seat. Mister Witness, for continuation of your testimony before this commission of the current local government councils and related matters, I want to remind you that you are still under oath. Before I hand you over to Madam Chair for us to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon ma'am.
You are welcome back.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mister Ture.
Good afternoon, Mr.
Um you are required to provide some documents here.
Yes. Yes, okay. Yeah, I was asked to provide the contract document for Aliukurma.
Yes.
In. This is one of, because I could not see all, so I see one of the contracts for the polytardex.
Okay.
Other one is the subpayments made to Demba Cham, that was also requested. I could see some.
Yes.
Alban market. Then the retirement for an interest of twelve thousand nine hundred. That one also is here.
Okay. Mister Ture, did you prepare a cover note for all the documents that you have? And the list of all the documents?
For the documents I'm going to submit on for Eco Farm Construction. Yellow color and.
I, I understand some have already been submitted. Okay. You don't have a cover note. Eh, yes, I, I, I noticed that. So now what we can do is we can give you time to go to the secretary. You can prepare a cover note for all the documents that you need to tender.
Okay.
I understand some have already been tendered, but for now, it's looking like you, you are sorting it out. So I'll give you time to just prepare a cover note.
No, they are already arranged. It's just that I have not prepared cover note for the few ones that I'm submitting now.
Okay.
But the rest of these contracts for Grabellen has already been, been done in my, in my computer.
Okay, that's fine. So now we can please have the ones you're having. Thank you.
Yeah, the contracts for future light construction.
Okay.
It is the payment for power com for the lights. It was also requested.
Okay.
Uh I was also asked to provide the, the provisional acceptance for the Banji Road construction supervised by the Gomor Spigency.
Okay, let me have all the documents.
And the main office.
Yes, please.
Just been told that this time. So you, he will sort out what, our documents.
Yes.
Sort out. And then you will apply for us to admit these documents.
We can apply to tender these now or we come back?
When we come back.
Back from.
Yes, already record.
Alright. Thank you, Madam Chair. B.